Welcome all to our evening board meeting. We met in, we met this afternoon for a workshop and we will begin with the report on close, there was no action in closed session, so we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bragman, in your Dodger blue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now for a report on our executive summary of workshops, Mrs. Reed.
Thank you so much, President Davidson. Earlier this evening, we were very fortunate to be graced by the presence of the Weaver Elementary School, Principal Dr. Todschmidt, as well as the Weaver community. We got to learn about their theme this year, Rocketing Towards Greatness, their ongoing partnership with parents, the $130,000 that they raised in their Jog-a-thon. Dr. Schmidt also highlighted the new student signing day, as well as some very impressive beginning-of-year MAP data that show that the Weaver Wails are indeed outperforming all of their peers nationally. And then Dr. Schmidt actually closed by sharing with us his hero of the heart for this year, Mrs. Christine Coxhill, who has really done an amazing job supporting both the school administration, as well as the parents and school community at Weaver. Thank you so much. Our second presentation earlier was the recognition of our 2025 CIF 7 Section Division 2 softball champions. And so Coach Wile, as well as our returning Lady Griffins from the softball team, were able to join us. And Mrs. Kraus, as well as Dr. Pulver, were able to sell some very kind words about the team and their really 20-year legacy of providing exemplary space for both our women athletes to reign superior athletically, but also find a place for every single senior from this past graduating class to pursue their collegiate athletic experience when they graduated.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. It was a very celebratory afternoon. We're now moving on to reports, recognitions, and introductions, and we are going to begin with our wonderful student report from Bryn Schmidt. And her dad is here to cheer her on.
Hang on. Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent Pulver, Executive Cabinet, members of the Los Alamos Community, and the Weaver Wails Community. My name is Bryn Schmidt, and I am honored to serve as your Student Representative to the Board of Education from Los Alamos High School. Here is my report. Activities: The long-awaited Los Al homecoming finally arrived, and it was a night to remember. This year, we decided to switch things up by holding the dance immediately after the homecoming game, rather than the traditional Saturday night event. The theme was "Party in the USA," and students showed up in cowboy boots, flare jeans, and plenty of red, white, and blue spirit. Our homecoming court featured five kings and five queens, making the anticipation at halftime especially exciting. The crowd erupted in applause as Kevin Zwimpy and Cassidy Fox were announced as this year's homecoming king and queen, revealed through the iconic balloon box surprise. After the game, students made their way back onto campus for a lively dance that featured TK burgers, a photo booth, a candy bar, and even a VR station. The energy was incredible. The music, dancing, and atmosphere created a truly memorable night. As a senior, I can confidently say that it was the perfect way to celebrate my final homecoming at Los Al. It was an unforgettable evening filled with school pride, friendship, and fun. Academics: Los Alamos High School's American Sign Language program continues to thrive and inspire students. Officially established seven years ago, ASL has grown into one of the most sought-after language courses on campus. Taught by Mrs. Bennett and Ms. Troutman, the program now offers four levels, and for the first time ever, ASL for Honors was introduced this year due to overwhelming student interest. Mrs. Bennett teaches two combination classes that include both ASL 4 and ASL 4 Honors students. While the classes share instruction time, Honors students take on more rigorous assignments, deeper linguistic analysis, and more detailed storytelling projects. Our recent unit focused on ASL storytelling through personification and registers, or different communication styles, while the new unit emphasizes enhancing ASL storytelling by developing advanced syntax, expression, and adaptation of written works into sign. It's amazing to see ASL now recognized as a weighted honors course, just like the other world languages. Both Mrs. Bennett and Ms. Troutman are exceptional educators who have helped make ASL one of the most engaging and meaningful programs at Los Al. It is inspiring to see so many students choosing to learn a language that builds authentic connection and inclusivity within our community. Athletics: Doubles, baseline, ace, love. These aren't just tennis terms; they are the rhythm of success for our girls' tennis team, whose season began on September 11th. Coming off last year's CIF semifinal run, the team is already off to a phenomenal start under the leadership of Coaches Kiptia and Gahungu, and varsity captains Amelia Jen and Kaylee Ton. In less than a month, the team has already secured five impressive wins, thanks to the standout performances by Ella Partisani, Rhea Udoni, Gabby Alomeri, and Fiana Lee. These achievements reflect not only talent, but also the team's relentless dedication, countless hours of practice, strategic training sessions, and a strong sense of teamwork. Fans can catch upcoming matches on October 9th, when JV competes at Los Al and varsity faces Huntington Beach High School, both at 3:00 p.m. Come out and cheer on our amazing Griffins. If you can't make it, then definitely go to their senior night on October 21st at 3:00 p.m. at Los Al. Arts: The Los Alamos Choir Program recently showcased its incredible talent with a Broadway-inspired show, and the students truly did not throw away their shot. From the very first day of school, choir members have been rehearsing tirelessly, and their hard work shown through in every performance. The Showtime featured musical numbers from the iconic productions such as Hamilton, Heathers, Ragtime, Hair, Mama Mia, and Just in Time. The energy, choreography, and vocals were outstanding, and each soloist delivered a performance worthy of a Broadway stage. As a former member of the choir program, it was so special to watch my friends perform and see their talent light up the stage. The production was filled with vibrant costumes, stunning harmonies, and genuine passion. None of this would have been made possible without the dedication of choir directors Moana Derlin and Matthew Davis, along with many individuals who worked behind the scenes to make it all happen. I can't wait for the next performance, the highly anticipated holiday show, and I encourage everyone to come out and support our incredible arts community. Student Life: Another exciting highlight this month was Club Rush. At Los Al, this multi-day event gives students the opportunity to explore and join clubs that match their interests and passions. This year's event featured an impressive 152 approved clubs, all eager to share what makes their organization special. This event was held during lunch and organized by ASB Club Commissioners Andrew Kahn and Sade Ravelo, and worked tirelessly with hundreds of club presidents to bring the event to life. A special STEM collaboration followed, where science and technology-based clubs partnered with the STEM department to showcase their work. Walking around and seeing the creativity, passion, and diversity of our student organizations was truly inspiring. Club Rush is such an important part of campus culture. It helps students connect, express themselves, and find their place within the Griffin community. Student Spotlight: To close out my report, I'd like to highlight an exceptional student and athlete who truly embodies what it means to be a Griffin, Jackson Renger. Jackson's Los Al journey began as a Weaver Whale, continued as an Oak Lion, and now comes full circle as a Los Al Griffin Senior. Jackson has played on the varsity football team since his freshman year, a remarkable accomplishment on its own. Even more impressive, he recently committed to play Division 1 football at Cornell University, an Ivy League school. When asked what he loves most about being a Griffin, Jackson shared that it's the community support, the way students, staff, and families rally behind one another. Outside of football, Jackson enjoys spending time with his friends and his cats, participating in mock child and coaching for F and L. His kindness, leadership, and dedication make him a role model for our entire campus. We are so proud of Jackson and all that he represents for the Los Alamos High School. With that, I would like to open the floor to any questions or comments from the board. Thank you all for joining me in today's student board report.
Bryn, I have one question. I don't know if you can answer it, but 152 clubs is absolutely incredible. There's a place for everybody. Do you have to have like a faculty advisor for every club?
Yes.
So 152 clubs are being covered by our faculty? That really says a lot about their commitment to you as well. So, thank you. Presentation was phenomenal.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hill?
Thank you. So I did not know that the homecoming dance was right after the game on campus. How was the feeling and the energy?
Um, it was definitely a lot more exciting than I thought it would be, especially since we had switched it up this year. I was very happy with like the turnout and how happy students were.
That was awesome. And it was, it was in our, we're not going to use the word old, but our, our, our practice gym. Is that what we call it now?
Um, it was in the, we called it the quad, so it was right in front of the STEM building.
Oh, it was right in front of the STEM, but, oh, oh, with the stairs and everything?
Yeah.
Oh, how fun. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah.
Well, thank, oh, go ahead. Thank you. Thank you, as always. I love learning from your point of view, and the information that you bring forward is so important for us and so eye-opening. One of the things that I learned about having the homecoming dance after the game is that the cost of the tickets was less, because we didn't have to worry about rental and going somewhere outside. So I, I thought that that was, that was great. And, and you know, what, what did you think about the fact that you didn't get to like dress up, that you went right after the game? Was that, was that easier? Did that make it less or more special?
Um, I was definitely a little bit bummed that it was not semi-formal, since this is my last homecoming, but I also am going to winter formal and prom, so I do have a chance to dress up then, so.
Yes.
So I know that a couple of people were definitely bummed, but I was just trying to make the most of what we had.
Yeah, no, I, I love that answer, because I think that gives us a lot of information. The other thing that I've noticed, and I want to give a shout out to you as, as part of the ASB leadership team, is how you guys come out for some of the less spotlighted sports and really support your fellow Griffins. I've seen you at the tennis games, I've seen you at the golf, and it's been really special to see how many students really come out to support one another. So thank you for highlighting that.
Thank you so much. Dr. Pulver, Superintendent's Report. Thanks, Bryn, you were wonderful.
Thank you, Madam President. It's always a pleasure to be able to follow Bryn, our student report. I guarantee you weren't the only one who did a gulp when you said your final homecoming game or dance. I think I saw two individuals in the audience do that as well. How many other students it connects, when we just look at the vast number of ASB students and just students in general coming out to support. But I also, I was like a kid in a candy store, you know, having our homecoming game on our campus and having two home football games on our campus, because we now have our gym, so we have these outward concessions, and I'm like, oh my gosh, we actually have concessions for our, for our fans. And then we have a video display board that had a graphic when you scored a touchdown. I've never seen a graphic at a touchdown. But then I love the other students that it connects, to see at our, our cheer, to see our marching band and our color guard perform at halftime, our dance students as well who were performing. And so sometimes we think of homecoming as football, and it's all these other groups and these performing arts groups who are also coming together to really showcase their talent. And then I just love that our, that our team really finds ways to spotlight all the great work that, that our students are doing, and the synergy of the staffs having to come together with their two minutes of halftime and their two minutes, but to make sure. And then watching them, they're such good participants. So the color guard is watching the dancers, the dancers are watching the cheerleaders, et cetera, so they all watch each other too, which I just think is really special. I know we talk a lot about being part of a, a town that has one high school, but it was really pretty cool to see, so I wanted to kind of give that. And then the other thing that I just wanted to thank you for your presentation is how you highlighted even other ASB students who do so much work. So when you were talking about, I think it was the, the homecoming? No, there was, it was, it was the Club Rush. Thank you, that's exactly what it was. How you spotlighted some of the other ASB students who really do important work as well. And so I appreciate how you uplift your other peers as well in, in these reports. So that was a lot to be said before even getting into my Superintendent's Report, but I just think it's important to recognize, particularly some of the other student groups, and I love seeing some of our band students here, marching, and color guards, so I thought I would also really give them a shout out for that as well. So tonight, I want to focus my Superintendent's Report on, on, on three areas, really. In the, in the first area, we actually heard during the Weaver School Report of our students already talking about Peace Week. And so two of our schools recognized Peace Week the, two weeks ago, and then the remaining of our school, elementary schools and middle schools are doing it this week. And so what Peace Week really stands for is about people exhibiting acceptance and compassion for everyone. And this really was a grassroots effort several years ago that came through some of our Bullying Prevention Task Force, which has now morphed into, you know, our Safety Committee, et cetera, which is a group of parents and teachers coming together to, how can we really try to find ways to make sure that we are trying to really send home messages to, to one another, that we are individuals, that we should just accept every, everyone and provide opportunities to welcome and, and, and find ways to, to celebrate the differences inside all of us. And so as I shared, Weaver and McCallough, they celebrated Peace Week September 22nd through the 26th, and then the remaining of our schools are this week, October 7th through the 10th. Our Focus Studios will be doing an exceptional video, I am sure, that I can't wait to share with you probably at the next board meeting, who really, and they did a great job last year focusing on really capturing what Peace Week is about. Because I think sometimes what I love that I even saw in our school report this, this afternoon, was it used to sometimes seem to be all about the dress-up days, and to me, that really waters down the meaning of what Peace Week it is. And so it's really these activities of starting with hello, making sure people have friends that they sit with at, at lunchtime, and kindness and compassion and, and unity. And so I think our Focus Studios did a great job last year of kind of capturing that essence. So I just want to thank all of our, our students and principals and administrators who really make this week something to spotlight and to truly be proud of as, as we come through. Another activity that I want to kind of highlight is our Walk Bike to School Days, and this really is something that, I've been in the district, I think this is my 27th year, and my recollection is it really came through our PTA. And I can remember years ago, Jody Rabonis, who was very active in the PTA, this was a passion project of hers, and to see that this is something that we continue to really recognize and really encourage people, and we're lucky in a community where people can walk to school safely, they can ride their bike safely with a helmet and not too fast if you have an e-bike, and follow the school, follow the pedestrian roads rules. But it's really just, what I find is it's a great community event. So many parents come out, in fact, our local law enforcement fire trucks come out and really kind of escort them to, to campus. And so we, to be good neighbors, because our Ross, if you, if you live in the Rossmore community, you can understand it's kind of hard to get in and out during the start times of our schools. So we have spread out Walk Bike to School over two different weeks. So tomorrow, we have Lee, LAE, Weaver, McGaw, and Oak, who are all gonna come together for this. I believe Oak has reached out to KTLA, they might be on the news tomorrow, so take, stay tuned in for that. And then October 15th, the next Wednesday, will be Hopkins and Rossmore. And that was really our way to kind of help alleviate some of it, because while you think, oh, there's not traffic, they're walking, cars have to stop to let that big crowd cross the corner. And, and so it's really just a great opportunity, and I see our families out there with their dogs, and again, just a wonderful community event, and we're lucky to be part of such a community. So it wouldn't be possible without really strong partnerships with the Los Alamos Police Department, Orange County Sheriff, and Orange County Fire Authority as well. So look out for us tomorrow and next Wednesday, October 15th. And then lastly, I sent a message out that really our team, wasn't just myself, had been working on, to all of our families about two or three weeks ago about the impact of attendance and why attendance matters, and really how is it even tied to our funding. And so I just thought I'd spend a little bit of time spotlighting that as well in my Superintendent's Report this evening. And so one of the things we really shared is that school attendance matters. It really matters in the sense of helping our kids learn. Regular attendance leads to better outcomes in reading, math, and graduation rates. Students who attend have a, have a better sense of belonging and connectedness with one another as well. But the other area that, in California, California is one of the few states in the nation that funds schools not based off of enrollment, but based off of average daily attendance. And so when a student misses school, we lose funding for that. Now, we don't want our families to send kids if they're sick, and I think COVID has really taught us that, but we do want you to make sure that we can get our kids here for, again, really just the learning, the sense of belonging. And then over time, some of our schools have not been able to be qualified for some of the California Distinguished School or other state and national recognition simply because due to chronic absenteeism of a particular group of students or multiple groups of students. And so it's just something that I thought that I would highlight a, a little bit more. And one of the things that we had shared to, to our, wanting to make sure parents really understand is that in California, attendance sticks. And what we mean by attendance sticks is the impact of our average daily attendance affects our funding for three years, because we're funded on average daily attendance, but they average that for, for three years. So if you have a great year, that's great. If you have a, a poor year, that, that can, that can stick with you. And so one of the things that we really shared is what is our attendance rate? And pre-COVID areas, I would say that our average district attendance rate was close to 97%, 96.7, 96%. But since COVID, it really has hovered in the 95s. And so just this last school year, the 24, 25 school year, our average attendance rate was 95.77. And so if we were fully funded at 100% funding, if we were funded off of our enrollment per se, you could think of it that way to some degree, that would be 103 million, but we had received 99 million. So about a loss of 4.3 million. And so one of the things we really were telling our families in the, in the, in the letter that we sent out is if we could just increase our attendance by 1% to go from 95.7 to 96.7, that would be an increase of $1 million to funding from the state, which really would allow us to provide more opportunities and services and staffing to support our, our students. And I just want to remind our families that our kids only have 180 days out of the school year, so that's less than half of the school year, less than half of a year, rather. And then the other thing that we've been working hard is to try to find natural breaks for our families to be able to take time off and to vacation. And so we have at, and this was in large part because we surveyed families and staff, we have a week-long break at Thanksgiving, we have two weeks at the winter, one of the few districts where we have a week in February, because we tie that to our president's holidays, instead of taking, you know, two short weeks. And then of course, spring break as well. So there's ample opportunities for families to be able to take a breath, take a break, and go vacation, and relax, and rejuvenate, and then come back. And so we hope that families aren't taking their kids out when, during the 180 days that we actually have school. And you can help us by scheduling medical appointments outside of school hours when possible, and avoid family trips on, on, on school days. So with that, that carries most of the letter that we had sent out. And then we're launching Attendance, Attending School is Cool, of course. Mrs. Garcia and Mrs. Pichardo are gonna be our PIO, and our Director of Student Services are coordinating this to try to create some challenge, you know, who doesn't love a little healthy competition, whether it's this Dodger or lack of Dodger banter here, or UCLA/USC banter? Well, same thing here. So they're gonna have an attendance challenge with our elementary and middle schools. It's gonna start off next week, October 13th, between Oak and McCallough Middle School, and the goal is for them to reach 98% attendance just that week. Now, we hope that will cascade and carry on, but, and whoever loses, whoever doesn't get the, that, then that principal has to wear the opposite school's spirit wear for a day. So if McCallough wins, they'll be wearing, Oak will be wearing McCallough gear and vice versa. October 20th to 21st, it's gonna pit our Tigers versus our Knights, LAE versus Rossmore, our Sea Lions versus the Whales. So notice we did our, our, our marine animals together. Actually, they tried to look at the percentage and the populations of the schools to try to make it fair. Yeah, exactly. And then we have our Lee Leopards and the Hopkins Huskies, Huskies, November 7th through the 10th. So just trying to find a fun way to kind of make attendance seem a little bit cool and see if it can garner any positive impact, both for students as well as for funding. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Pulver. That was wonderful. It's really great to hear about Peace Week. It's really, truly evolved. So now we are going to do board, board member communication, so I think I, Mr. Forehand has advised that I started on that side last time. So Matt, Matt, you get, you get to go first. And it's also we're choosing you because you're wearing Dodger blue.
It's not like I'm not gonna repeat things that haven't been said already, so let's just be real, but by the time it gets sent, you missed participating. Good luck. So since our last meeting, it's been another busy few weeks across Los Al Unified. I know one of the things we've already talked about again, and we get repetitive, is the Choir's Broadway show, and so I just really want to talk about how phenomenal that was. It was the perfect way to start off a senior season. We talk about sports, but, and so often, but for the seniors that are in choir, this is their last opportunity to get up and perform. And so I know I talked to some senior families just excited around like, this is the kickoff, like there was the giddiness of like, you've been preparing all the time. And so we saw some amazing, truly Broadway caliber performances, so I want to just thank the students that performed, the choir booster club, the volunteers. It was a, it was a holistic experience. When you walked on campus, there was the snacks, there was the swag, there was, you know, lighting and buttons and everything. It was just a really fun way, and you saw so many younger students that were inspired by it. So it was really cool. So I encourage people like, like Bryn said, if you can make it to the holiday show, save the dates, get your tickets, be there if you haven't been, it's amazing. And so I know I can't wait to, to take my family to see that again. In terms of the last month, I know I've spent a lot of time around athletic events, and so I think it's really cool also that we highlighted some of the non-big-name sports. And so I know I've had the opportunity to go visit actually some of the JV sports, to see girls' tennis and flag football on campus, to see volleyball in the amazing new Griffin Center. So I encourage, like we heard, to go out and visit, see, this is why I think one of the only sports I haven't gotten to see in action is golf. I know, Mr. Forehand, you were there, it sounds like Miss Partisani was there, but to get out and enjoy the energy and the sportsmanship, the way our students are performing. And these are student athletes who are spending so much time. I talked to a football player who's in five AP classes right now, and there was a joke made, I, that he was studying on the way to Calabasas in the bathroom for a test. I hope that wasn't true, but he might have been doing that. And so the students are really going all out in terms of making sure that they're performing academically, athletically, and representing us in a really great way. A plug that Flag Football Senior Night is tomorrow night at 5:30. So if you haven't seen Flag Football in action, they are amazing. We play against some really competitive teams, and so our record might not be what they wanted to be this year, but the girls are working really hard, they're well-coached, they are out there, and the spirit on that field is awesome. I do want to also call attention to our Griffin Boys Football Team, who are 7-0 heading into league, and as many people have heard, will be at SoFi Stadium next week. So if you are excited to go see them play in the same field that the World Cup will be at, and the Olympics are gonna be at, and has hosted the Super Bowl, go see the boys next week. That'll be a really cool experience, starting league against our rival, who I've learned, we don't actually call by their name, but they're the green team, we don't call them by their names, so you figure out who they are, but we're playing them next Thursday at SoFi. And lastly, I actually want to shout out Ms. Garcia, who I think is sitting in the back, she's hiding in the back. Last week, I was lucky enough, as a board member, we were part of a lot of committees, and so last week I was able to participate and sit in on the Safety and Wellness Committee, and Ms. Garcia led her first one in her new role. So I appreciate the way in which you led and shared all of the things that are happening in our district to keep our students safe. And so we talked about how we're engaging in emergency protocols and installing new cameras, make sure blind spots are caught when we have the Griffin Center and other places on the high school campus. Our Say Something campaign, and make sure that students know there's a way in which they can call and, and keep each other accountable and keep each other safe. If you hear about something, say something, which is an amazing mental health If you hear about something, say something, which is an amazing mental health support that we also have for our students. So I truly want to shout out Ms. Garcia stepping into a role that's very challenging. It keeps our students so safe. It makes our community safe. I know parents, you can't have students at school if you don't feel that they're going to be safe on campus. And so we really appreciate all you're doing. I know that's for everyone. That's a board commitment that also carries on the legacy of Dr. Freeman, who was here before, but we really do appreciate that. So it's an exciting time. I know it's crazy to think we're heading into the fall and Thanksgiving and Christmas will be here before we know it. So I'm excited to continue to see all the events happening in the coming weeks and months. And with that, I'll hand it off to Mr. Forehand.
Yes, I am the board rep on the SELPA Special Education, SELPA it's called. And I wanted to mention that we celebrated Ben Rodriguez as the SELPA Employee of the Year and Ben as the Director of Behavioral Supports and Professional Learning. He has worked with many of our teachers and students. And then we have a SELPA Community Advisory Committee, and it's well-attended now. And it's kind of neat that Michelle Ewing and Ashley Rogers' parents at McGaw are the President and Assistant President of that group. I got a chance to attend the CSCE Chapter Meeting in September, and it was a great way, it was great to be invited and hear as a board member conversations around leveled pay. And I want to thank CSA, CSCE for extending invitations to each of us to attend a meeting this year. Shout outs, everybody's talking about the Broadway show. I felt like I just got home from New York on Broadway Saturday night. I want to shout out the ASB at Los Alamos High and how great it was that they took the time to celebrate some of the sports Fernaz mentioned that aren't recognized as others. And Fernaz and I saw girls tennis and the support ASB gave at the recent match. Griffins With A Mission was held in the gym and a shout out to Maria Kiptia and Cynthia Vena, staff members for training over 160 leaders who met with all the ninth graders to help them begin to make even better connections to school. The small groups I saw in the new gym were well-led by the students. And this effort at Connections is supported also by staff at Oak, McAuliffe, and Los Alamos with sponsoring millions of clubs on all three campuses. Great job. The Griffin Newsletter is such a wonderful school newsletter. If you don't get a chance, you can read it online, but it gives timely topics as well as topics that even interest me. The article Magical and Metropolitan Fall Movie Updates. I got to know that there's actually going to be a sequel to When Harry Met Sally. Can't wait. Thank you to the Rossmore Homeowners Association. Those Post-it Board Members were given out to the teachers as well as Nick's sandwiches to just thank them for all they do for our kids. And we have one more to do at Hopkinson coming up in a few weeks. And maybe we don't realize this, but a shout out to our LVN and nurses for all the screenings being done for our kindergarten, second, and fifth graders for vision and hearing. These screenings often make a difference for our kids' success. And lastly, the Los Alamos Model United Nations Club has now sprouted junior Model United Nations at Oak and McAuliffe, and they're well on their way. They've attended, the Oak one attended a couple of competitions and came home, six, a couple of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders won awards. And I know McAuliffe is off to a great start. Thank you.
Mrs. Hill?
Thank you very much. I want to just talk a little bit about the home football games that we've had and how much I really appreciate the high school administration and the staff at the district office. It's a lot to pull off. I know it is. I know it's a lot easier to just rent a stadium and go show up than all that we have to do. And you'd be surprised at how many things have to be done and how much behind the scenes goes on. But truly, when I walked on that campus on a Friday night, and as Dr. Pulver said, all of our football, obviously, our football team was there, so many parents and fans, so many other groups attending, it just felt the way it should on a Friday night with the big Griffin Center and the big board display. It was just, it was so incredibly special. And I'm just so appreciative to everybody who made that happen. I know it's not easy, nor is it cheap, but I think it is really absolutely phenomenal. And I think it really does do that thing that Dr. Pulver was talking about in our goal number two, where it's really connecting every student to our school in one form or fashion or the other. So that was just a really special, special moment for me. And also, I was able to attend the Orange County School Boards Association Budget and Legislative Updates. Not as exciting as a football game, but really necessary because I think we need to have the knowledge and the information to really be able to make good decisions when it comes to our budget. And so knowing what is coming down, knowing what the temperature is, knowing what other legislation may be on board, I think, is really, a really big part of the job that I have. And I'm respectful of that, and I try to take those opportunities anytime I can. I was really inspired by the Los Alamos Heroes Luncheon, which is done by the Chamber every year. And of course, our wonderful superintendent is co-chair, co-chair of our Los Alamos Chamber this year and an amazing emcee. If you've never seen him emcee, I've seen him emcee a lot of things lately, and I don't get tired of it. He does a great, great, great job. So I really appreciate that and appreciate the opportunity that we had to really say how special a lot of the armed forces, because we have the base, also, I also love that they really recognize somebody from the hospital in that luncheon, in that Heroes Luncheon as well, as well as obviously our police officers and sheriffs and fire. So that was wonderful. And then just a quick shout out this Saturday night, if you don't have your tickets, there is an event called Taste for Los Alamos. There'll be about 2,400 people back in the parking lot of Sprouts. And those tickets are being sold by our local booster clubs. And that's, for some of those booster clubs, that's their biggest fundraiser of the year is selling the tickets. And then also, there will be an auction as well, a big silent auction. So come out, enjoy. All of the restaurants provide their food for that many people. And that's just the kind of community that we have here in Los Alamos, Seal Beach, and Rossmore. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hill. Mrs. Partizani?
Yes, no, thank you. Well, I had a chance to do a couple of campus visits and have had a chance to see firsthand the hard work that's underway by our teachers and administrators, really in pursuit of academic excellence, which is one of our forays. And I saw firsthand the support that they get from our strong Ed Services team, a shout out to them, because a lot of the collaboration and the hard work that really happens is a team effort at the district. And I really wanted to make sure to highlight that. I also loved seeing the professional learning communities back on our campuses. This is a best practice, and I'm so pleased to see that we're investing our time and resources to make this happen. I was also at the choir show, and I'm not going to go into that, but they were remarkable. And also, I wanted to highlight something that made a big impression on me. I was invited to sit in on a Q and A session between our sophomore students and the author of a book that they were reading in their English class. Yeah, it was, it was awesome to walk into that student hall and see, I don't know, over 80 or so sophomores sitting there, prepared with their questions in hand, and to start a dialogue with the author. And the types of dialogue that really ensued was so authentic and so personal in nature that I just walked away so inspired. I definitely want to give a shout out to Ms. Kronk for coordinating this wonderful experience for our students and for inviting me. I really, really enjoyed it. I can't wait for the next one. But I also want to recognize all of our other teachers and administrators that really work to engineer these types of special sort of extra opportunities for our students to really learn in a real world kind of way. I think that's where the real learning comes from, and I just really want to, you know, kind of go above and recognize that. And to that point, and this is kind of hot off the press, so hopefully I'm not stealing anyone's bubble, but as a former LEAF board member, I wanted to give a shout out to them and our wonderful community of donors who recently, I learned that we, they have approved over 70 different innovation grants totaling about $154,000 to our teachers. And again, it kind of goes back to looking for these, you know, extra opportunities to really bring alive, make alive the learning that we do in a day-to-day perspective. So I'm just really proud of that, and I wanted to give them a shout out. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. So coming last, you do eliminate a lot, but which is not bad for the audience. So first of all, I do want to say thank you to the choir, Mrs. Derlin and Mr. Davis. I was heartbroken because I had already booked, my husband and I had already planned a trip back east to spend time with our grandchildren. That wasn't heartbreaking. That's joyful. But I was going to miss the choir performance. And when Moana heard that, she said, no, no, come to our rehearsal on Saturday before that. And I, I was so honored to do that and really tried to sort of be hidden in the wings. But it was absolutely incredible because what I saw was all of the work that goes on behind the scenes, how hard these kids try, the practice, 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 redoing a number, redoing a step. One student was struggling with a step, another one came over and helped him. It was just such an uplifting experience. And I love Broadway musicals. And I told Moana, thank you so much, because I saw bits and pieces. It was wonderful. I love Hamilton more than life itself. And she said, oh, stop, we're not, we're not doing what we're doing right now. And she did the whole set from Hamilton for me, which was, and my husband, he loves it too. But it was absolutely outstanding, the choreography, the voices, the coordination. And this was the Saturday practice. So I'm really grateful to both Mrs. Derlin and Mr. Davis for the great program they're building. And this was absolutely Broadway-level performance, even in rehearsals. I won't say much about homecoming, other than it was wonderful. And Bryn, your description was fabulous. And it was so uplifting to have the game in our own stadium. My family football with Los Alamos goes back to 1992, and I don't ever remember having a homecoming game at Los Alamos. It was very special. And thank you, Mrs. Reed. I know you had a lot, lot to do with that. I also joined the virtual seminar for the state budget through OC, the Orange County Department of Education. No, it was not uplifting, but it was honest and informative, and it made very clear to us, and people say, why is enrollment going down? Statewide, the birth rate is going down, so we need more babies. But the attendance is a gigantic deal. And so I really applaud the district for the work you're doing and what the schools are doing individually to build attendance. They really made it very clear to us that we need to be careful in all of our budgeting. And when you think, and Mrs. Schner really explained this well to us, she's like the guru, and then these are support programs, seminars that we go to, that 85%, nearly 85% of our budget goes to salaries and benefits. That leaves 15% of our budget to run nine campuses for an entire year. So I think that you and your department do a phenomenal job of working with what we've got and presenting it to us. So thank you. I love the Heroes Luncheon. Mrs. Hill explained it well. It was wonderful seeing someone from every department, military and first responders in our county honored that day. And the stories of each one of them was very heartwarming. They are heroes. Each one of us has different positions we sign up for outside of the board. And so I'm just going to real quickly run through what I've gained so far from the three that I'm working on right now. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees for North Orange County ROP. And Russ, thank you for being here. This gentleman is my liaison director, mentor guru, and I really appreciate you being here tonight from ROP. One thing that, this is my first fall on ROP, and what I'm really loving is that we are getting opportunities to visit other campuses because we are part of a consortium of districts. And each district, some districts like Anaheim, they have gigantic ROP programs. Ours right now is, our biggest highlight is Fire Science and Medical, like EMT certification. It's, if you ever get a chance, if you haven't been there on campus, we literally have an ambulance inside the classroom, and that's because of ROP and grants. And so these ROP programs give kids a chance to look at their passions, to consider what they might want to do. And this isn't one of our ROP programs, but it does explain a little bit about what happens. Our robotics team, I watched the team build from when I first came on the board, six years, seven years ago now. Some of my students were on there and asked me to come, and I followed it along. And so when one boy became a senior, he'd been so actively engaged in building this really strong club that competed in county-wide competitions. And I said to him, so now you're applying to colleges to build, is it robotics engineering? Is that what you're doing? And he said, no, you know what? I thought that's what I would want. But what I realized through this whole process is that I want to pursue business. I want to be a project manager. So out of these programs that are across the county and are building, and these opportunities that our students have, they're finding out more about themselves and what they might choose to do. So I'm so grateful for these programs and so grateful to be able to preview them. I went to Oxford Academy and previewed a couple of their ROP classes that were absolutely exceptional. Their Fire Science class wasn't as good as ours, but that's because we have the ambulance. And then another assignment that I have with Mr. Forehand is we are on the PTA District Council. We represent the board for that. And I really, our PTAs, we know are exceptional, but I, what I love about this group is when we sit down, they share all that every school is doing, and it's astounding. And they build and reinforce each other. It's not a competition. It's more about, oh, you use that? Could you let me have some information about it later? They bring up issues, and Dr. Pulver is there to respond. And we listen and we learn from what they have to share. One representative shared about some concerns about AI, and she raised questions that I hadn't thought about. So it's a really important organization. And I just especially want to express my sincere appreciation to the PTA District Council leaders for the emphasis they're putting on educating themselves and then educating our district about bills before Congress, our bills before the State Assembly and the State Senate. And Jeanette Andrus is sitting here. She is the chair for that committee on the council. And it's critically important that we pay attention and understand. These bills determine policy, they determine funding, they determine mandates like the COVID masking, the COVID vaccinations. They determine mandates like, are we going to have an ethnic studies program? It matters in our classrooms and it matters on our campuses. So talk to your representatives, talk to your PTA representatives, but be educated as you go to the polls and know that these votes make a difference. And Mrs. Garcia, I want to thank you too. I was the other board member on your safety committee meeting, and you are, you just hit the ground running. You're doing such an excellent job. And as Mr. Bragman stated, we, she presented information about how we're addressing issues like campus safety, violent intruder drills. We know that that's something that people are thinking about as much as we don't want to, substance abuse, first aid training, mental health resources, and more. It's absolutely astounding to me, the work that is covered by this committee. And a little bit sad and reflective to think that a lot of these issues were not issues 15 or 20 years ago, but they're very important now. And so the work that the district is doing and she is leading is critically important. Thank you, schools. Thank you, Dr. Schmidt, for the walkthroughs and the back-to-school nights that we are invited to. I had a wonderful time on your campus, both at back-to-school night and at the walk-through. both at back-to-school night and at the walkthrough the other day. Dr. Schmidt presented this afternoon, as Mrs. Reed shared. And I think we just have to celebrate that Weaver was, is according to data, 24th of 6,000 elementary schools in the state, right? Which makes them one-half of 1%. That's the group that Weaver falls in. And our other schools did well, too. So we applaud the efforts of our administrators, our teachers, our staff, and our parents who support everything that's going on. So that's it for me. Thank you. We now move on to public comments. We have six cards, and I need to read this. The board welcomes input from the public. This is the opportunity for community members to provide public comment to the board on agenda items or items not listed on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the board should complete a speaker request card prior to the start of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of three minutes. Public comment is limited to a total of 30 minutes. Comment cards can be submitted to the district office anytime after 9:00 AM in the day of the board meeting, on the day of the board meeting, and will be accepted at the start of the board meeting at 6:00. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. When addressing the board, speakers are requested to address the board from the podium, state their name, and adhere to time limits. The board may not take any action or discuss any item not appearing on the posted agenda and cannot immediately respond to public comments. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or deflamatory comments regarding any person simply because those comments are made at a public meeting. And my first card, I'm going to call our very wonderful jazz director, Justin Padilla, to the podium.
Good evening, Board President Davidson, esteemed members of the Board, Superintendent Pulver, and Executive Cabinet. My name is Justin Padilla, Director of Instrumental Music at Los Alamos High School. 15 years ago, Randy Hill, the former president of LAEF, shared a valuable insight with me that really resonates. He said, if you complain about what is, then it's so much more difficult to receive support. On the other hand, if you have a vision of what could be better and where there is room for improvement, then you will have the attention of the stakeholders who affect change. This past summer at Los Alamos High School, we witnessed this principle in action with significant improvements made to our facilities, specifically in our instrumental music program. Tonight, I would like to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude for your decision to approve funding for the complete renovation of both instrumental music rooms. It's truly remarkable because both directors were included in every step of the process. Now, this input ensured that the spaces were fully equipped to meet the needs of our current and future Griffins. Now, the level of this collaboration may seem standard, but however, it's not standard in most districts. I would also like to extend my personal thanks to Assistant Principal Blake Hypeock for his professionalism throughout the project. His ability to swiftly address requests from both directors and communicate effectively with all parties involved was invaluable to bring this vision to fruition. Furthermore, Principal Kraus and Mr. Hypeock currently designated a significant amount of Prop 28 funds to equip both rooms with instruments and assets that will help serve and support our marching arts, concert band, orchestra, and jazz students. Thank you once again for your support and commitment to furthering the vision of igniting unlimited possibilities in the arts. The following speakers are student leaders and booster board members who would also like to share gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Padilla, for your work. Yes, thank you. Our next speaker is Jacob Bunchen. If I mispronounce anybody's name, please help me.
Hello. Good evening, Board President Davidson, esteemed members of the Board, and Superintendent Pulver, and the Executive Cabinet. My name is Jacob Bukin. I am the, that's all right, no problem. I am the other instrumental music director at Los Alamos High School. It's my second year in the position, and I am appreciating every second of it. And I'm so appreciative to share a message of gratitude tonight. I'd like to sincerely thank the administrative team, especially Mr. Hypeock and Mrs. Kraus, as well as the Los Alamos Board of Education for their incredible support of our instrumental music program. Through the use of Prop 28 and other funds, we've been able to renovate our music classrooms, as Mr. Padilla said, add dedicated practice rooms, which get utilized daily, and upgrade our instrument inventory. This includes new timpani drums, other percussion instruments, and some high-quality brass instruments, to name a few. The upkeep and maintenance is also included in this of these instruments, and the current stock of these instruments, which need to be serviced yearly to maintain good condition. These resources not only elevate our daily learning environment, but also allow our students to grow as musicians in a space that truly matches their talent and their dedication. We're deeply grateful for their continued support and investment in the arts and are excited to continue to build a strong instrumental music program at Los Alamos High School. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your great work, Jacob. Our next speaker is Fay Vasconcelas. I'm getting lots of challenges. Tell me what I do wrong.
You got that right. Good evening, Board President Davidson, esteemed members of the Board, Superintendent Pulver, and the Executive Cabinet. I'm Fay Vasconcelas, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Los Alamos High School Orchestra Booster President. On behalf of the Los Alamos High School Orchestra Program, I would like to extend our gratitude for your generosity towards the instrumental music program at Los Alamos High School. Your continued support, vision, and commitment to the arts make an already outstanding program even better. This funding will allow the program to grow, to expand the number of students, and ensure that all of the students have instruments, particularly for the students with larger instruments. They're able to have instruments at school as well as at home. It's impossible to log a cello and a bass to school on a daily basis. We would also like to warmly invite you to attend all of our upcoming orchestra events. As always, tickets are complimentary for Los Alamos faculty and Los Alamos board members. And thank you to Tina for always sending the emails over for RSVPs. Our first event is coming up on October 21st at Magaw, and it's at 7:00 PM. The students will be dressed in costume, and they'll be playing some fun music. And if you think the choir show was fantastic, then you should see the Nutcracker performance in December. It's truly an extraordinary event. I know Chris Forehand and Marla Davidson are always in attendance there. We have two performances on the 13th, one at 1:00 PM and one at 7:00 PM. Everyone will receive an invitation to that from the orchestra. And not only do you get to see the excellent orchestra perform, but it's also a cross-collaboration across the arts groups. So we have choir, wind symphony, drama, and dance performing at that event as well. Thank you again for your belief in the value of music education and for championing opportunities for our students.
Thank you so much, Fay.
Ms. Davidson, I know we can't comment on, but just, I do want to share, to the 21st, we won't be there because we have a board meeting, but we will be there in spirit. So if it were any other day, I'm sure you'd have board members there.
We keep messing that up. Every year for that performance, we have a board meeting. You know, can we play hooky?
Be proud of those more.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Hannah Nguyen. Nguyen?
We're just going to all go at the same time. We all have the same message. But good evening, Board President Davidson, esteemed members of the Board, and Superintendent Pulver, and the Executive Cabinet. My name is Connor Fox. I am the president of the New Triumph Music Honor Society, and I play French horn in the Wind Symphony, trumpet in Jazz I, and am the drum major of the marching band. And I would like to sincerely thank you all for the support that you have given the music program by approving the funds we have asked for. And as a senior, I have been part of this program for years, and as a partaker in many groups, I have seen what it was like a couple of years ago, and I can see the difference your investment will make for all of the instrumental music program. In the past, we may have struggled to do things on our own, but now we have the resources to perform with pride. The future improvement in equipment, opportunities, and morale has and will be incredible. You have shown that our hard work and passion matter. So on behalf of all the students, thank you for believing in our music, our growth, and our future.
Hello, I'm Tyler Bragg. I'm in 12th grade, and I'm the VP of Triumph for the orchestras at Los Alamos High School. I play cello, and this is my seventh year as an orchestra student in the Los Alamos Unified School District.
Hello, I'm Hannah Nguyen, and I'm also in 12th grade, and I am the VP of Jazz at Los Alamos High School. I play violin in Jazz I, and I play viola in the chamber orchestra. So I'm in both groups, and it's been an amazing experience.
We wanted to take a moment to express our gratitude for everything that the district administration has done to help us thrive as musicians.
This year, we're so grateful to have been given two fully renovated classrooms and $70,000 to fund new instruments.
Both of these contributions immensely strengthen our program and allow our students to thrive.
We greatly appreciate the district's continued support and contributions towards the arts.
One of my favorite parts about being in orchestra is the strong community of students. I've made lifelong memories being a part of orchestra, especially during our trip to San Francisco last year. One of my favorite parts of the trip was when we had the opportunity to professionally record music at Skywalker Ranch, the studio where the score for the Star Wars films was recorded. Moments like these really make me feel valued as both a student and musician.
For me, I love being part of jazz and orchestra. But for jazz, being in that specific program, it really allows me to express my creativity with the solos and improvisations. And many of my closest friendships come from these programs, and I love seeing these people every day. We even have a movie night planned, and we're going to watch Keep Up Demon Hunters. We're all very close, and these programs really allow us to strengthen, oh, sorry, empower our bonds together, and it really helps us play way better.
So once again, thank you to the district administration for continuing to support our music programs and allowing students to have unforgettable memories as high schoolers.
Thank you so much.
Wow. We're not allowed to comment, but boy, do you make us proud. That was absolutely incredible. Please come back and share your future dreams with us. Dr. Pulver?
Yes, they can't comment. I can. I'll be quick. But first off, thank you. It's almost, we don't see it too often, as many of you know, to see people coming to the board meeting to express gratitude and positive. You're right, we often hear more when there are complaints, which we welcome that as well. But it certainly is refreshing. And we know what a difference, you know, sometimes we say we're not about the buildings, but we know what a difference having really quality buildings and facilities. I want to thank our facilities team and our business services because a lot of that under Elvia and previous facilities director CJ, and now Edwin, who just really continue to make sure that these projects really enhance opportunities. And then I love the fact that the coordination of our site administrators is, sometimes I think we forget that that's a whole nother layer on top of our site administrators. And then really thank the voters, both for passing bonds as well as for passing Prop 28, which Prop 28 really allowed to have more state dollars allocated to support the music programs and performing arts, other art programs. And a lot of that is really through the exceptional leadership through Ed Services and Mrs. Reed, who really helped all of our teams take a look at how we can best spend the one-time dollars and the ongoing, because there's a crazy formula, 80% for staff and 20% for materials and supplies. And we really did a waiver to have our first year be able to provide us with some seed money for supplies, to be able, knowing that so many programs take a big upfront material cost. So really the synergy of everyone working together to provide unlimited opportunities for our kids. And I say, if you think that's great, we can't wait to see what happens with the PAC as well. We are earmarking $12 million or more to renovate the PAC as well. So I hope more, I hope we can get some more state matching funds to dedicate some of those dollars as well.
Thank you, Dr. Pulver. And thank you. So you're welcome to stay for the business part, but we know you have programs to create and homework to finish. So please feel free to leave now, and we thank you with all our hearts for your being here. Thank you. Great job. Thank you all. Now, we're moving on to information presentations, beginning with a public hearing. And Dr. Wiestreit, would you like to share the information for that?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Madam President. So tonight, the Board of Education is issuing their intent to reappoint David Boyer to serve his three-year term on the Los Alamos Unified School District Personnel Commission. The term of the appointment will run from noon on December 1st, 2025, through noon of December 1st, 2028.
Thank you. So we will go into public hearing about that intention. So I'm going to gavel out of this meeting into a public hearing. Do I have any discussion? So no discussion. We'll gavel out of the hearing and gavel back into the meeting. Do I have a motion for approval of Dave Boyer for the Personnel Commission?
I'd like to so move.
That action item will be later. Right now, this is just the public hearing, in case any of the public wanted to comment, which is required under the Ed Code.
Sorry, Diana. Okay. So, okay, so Dr. Wiestreit, quarterly report on the Williams Uniform Complaints?
Yes, thank you. We're pleased to report that no complaints were filed with any school in our district during this past quarter.
That's very wonderful. Thank you. Moving on to consent items, we have some polls. So we're first going to address consent items 10A through E, G, H, J, K, M through AG. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
And Q.
And Q. Oh, AQ. Okay, sorry. AQ. So is there any discussion?
I second.
One, two. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion carries 5-0. Moving on then to 10F.
I so move. Approval?
Okay, discussion, Mrs. Hill?
Thank you very much. I pulled this item because, and it seems to be a bit of a theme this evening, but just really the opportunity. So this is approval for an overnight extended field trip for Los Alamos High School Journalism students to Nashville. And they will attend the JEA National High School Journalism Conference, where they'll get an opportunity to take part in workshops, networking, contests, and critiques. And I just think it's so amazing that we open up opportunities that are real-world opportunities, professional opportunities for our students. And we couldn't do this without the support, obviously, of their parents and the boosters that go along with it. But that they, that so many of our teachers, because our teachers are doing this, and they're going to be going for this November 13th through the 16th on their time, taking these students, teaching, opening it up as a real learning opportunity and really a professional learning opportunity. And so what I'd like to just say to our students, I learned this long ago, that when you go to a conference like this, you'll get a lot of information, and it'll seem overwhelming. But if you are very intentional about finding one thing that you take with you, that you implement, it will be a tremendous success. So I'm just grateful that we have amazing opportunities like this for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand.
Yeah, I just want to comment. I met with the Gazette team recently, and if you're so inclined, there's a QR on the Gazette. so inclined, there's a QR on the Gazette that you can donate to that trip. Yep?
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to 10I, approval in agreement with Educators Cooperative. Mrs. Partizani, you pulled that? Oops, we need a motion. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Discussion?
Yes.
Oh, he did?
Yes. So, yes, I asked for this item to be pulled, because like you said, Mrs. Davidson, it's an approval for an agreement with Educators Cooperative Incorporated to provide career education consulting for the Career Connected Schools Initiative. And I found this quite interesting, and I thought that maybe Mrs. Reed could help us understand a little bit more about what this entails.
Absolutely. Mrs. Partizani, well, the Educators Cooperative will provide support for our K-12 Strong Workforce Initiative for Career Connected Schools, and so we're very proud to participate in the Connected Schools Initiative. It's a countywide effort led by the Orange County Department of Education to help students connect classroom learning to future careers and professional skills. So we're just in the beginning process of this with the agreement, but the goal is that both Oak and McCullough Middle School will be part of this initiative, and that in the future, teachers will be integrating career awareness and relevance into existing lessons, helping students see how and what they learn in the class connects to the world of work. So this initiative builds in our district's broader K-12 Career Connected Continuum, linking career awareness in elementary steam, exploration in middle school, and then later, preparation through our high school CTE pathways, dual enrollment, or even some of the work-based learning opportunities that we have and that are expanding.
That's great. Thank you. I love seeing that investment.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Do I have any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion carries 5-0. Moving to 10L, amendment of the approval of an agreement with UCLA Mathematics Project. Mrs. Partizani, you pulled that?
Yes, so, do you want to do a motion first?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
So so moved.
I'll second.
And then, yes, I also asked for this item to be pulled. I know that we talked about it last, at the last meeting, but I think something, an investment like this in professional development for grades 6 through 12 for our math teachers is just worth noting again. So if you don't mind, Mrs. Reed?
Absolutely. So we're really excited to be partnering with the UCLA Math Project. We were very lucky and excited last time to be able to get a date on the calendar to have them come and do an onsite facilitation of professional development, because usually you're required to travel there, and it's quite expensive to bring 27 teachers to UCLA for the day. And so they'll be joining us now on January 14th. We've brought this forward this time, just a date in this school year, just in case their calendars conflict again, we won't have to bring our contract back. But they'll be spending the day with our 612 mathematics teachers, really looking at how AI is impacting, how teachers can positively impact differentiation engagement within a mathematics classroom, as well as its role in further math development post college, post-high school, sorry, in the college arena.
That's awesome. And would you please bring us back, sort of, you know, some feedback from the teachers and how that goes?
Absolutely.
When it happens. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries 5-0. Now we're moving on to action items. Our first action item is reading of a revised board policy 3312 on contracts. Mrs. Schnur?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We are bringing forward a first reading of revised board policy 3312, which is contracts. We're bringing this forward in recommendation of CSBA's current board policy guidance. So the policy is really reflecting a new law, SB 1303, which was passed in 2024. The law requires if the district utilizes a private labor compliance entity, the entity must submit a signed declaration verifying that it does, it does not have a conflict of interest, as well as it defines a private labor compliance entity, and it defines what a conflict of interest. So it's just basically updating it.
Do I, thank you so much. Do I have a motion for approval for the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would recommend, if we don't have any changes, can we approve it at the first, this first reading?
Yeah, she would just want to amend the motion to approve and waive a second reading, and then get a second on that.
Great. So I will amend the motion that we approve and waive the second reading of this revised board policy 3312.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion carries 5-0. We have another reading of a board policy, uniform public construction cost accounting. Mrs. Schnur?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a new policy that we are bringing forward, also with CSBA's recommendation. The policy ensures construction and repair projects are done legally, efficiently, and at best value. It allows flexibility for smaller projects and emergencies while requiring transparency and accountability for all work. Really, what this would mean for the district is we become a part of a cupka, which means that we can have a list of already pre-approved bidding companies that will just make it more effective and more efficient for us to get some of the work done most faster.
Great. Do we want to do an amended?
I recommend that we amend this action item to be the-
I don't think you had a motion yet, so you won't need to amend the motion.
Oh, just make a motion, so we don't even have to amend. So the motion is that we are going to approve this first reading and not have to have a second reading of board policy 3311.1. That is my motion.
The motion would be to approve the first reading and waive the second.
Waive the second.
I'll second that.
Okay. And if somebody can say it more efficiently next time, please do.
No, you did a great job. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion carries 5-0. And for anyone with curiosity about how we don't need the first reading, we get the agenda on Friday, and we get all of these readings for, provided for us at that time. So we have the opportunity to read it and see if we need changes. So now we're moving on to approval of Resolution 2025-2026, supporting Red Ribbon Week. And Dr. Wiestright, and then I'm going to have Mrs. Hill read it.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. That's perfect. Tonight, we're bringing forward, as we do every year, the resolution to support the Red Ribbon Campaign, amend Red Ribbon Week at all of our school sites for the '25-'26 school year.
Good, thank you. Do I have a motion for approval?
I have to read the red.
Okay, read it.
That is the motion, I do believe, correct?
Read it before the motion?
Okay. Well, it is the- It's a motion. By reading.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So whereas school and drug abuse has continued to be in epic stages in the United States, and whereas it is imperative that community members launch visible substance abuse prevention efforts to reduce the demand for illegal drugs, alcohol, and tobacco, whereas Red Ribbon Week is dedicated to a federal drug enforcement agency, Enrique Carmarita, I believe, who was killed by drug traffickers in Mexico in 1985, whereas in response to his death, parents across the country began wearing red ribbons to symbolize the commitment towards the creation of a drug-free America. Whereas in 2028-29, the Los Alamedos Unified School District established a priority to address student drug and alcohol abuse and created Substance Abuse Task Force, which now is part of the district's Safety and Wellness Committee comprised of a wide variety of school and district staff and community members. Therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Education of Los Alamedos Unified School District does hereby support the Red Ribbon Campaign and recognize October 25th through the 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Los Alamedos Unified, and encourages its citizens to participate in drug awareness activities, making it a visible statement that we strongly stay committed to living a healthy life.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think we just need to say Mrs. Hill did a great job with Red Ribbon Week, not Red Ribbon Week. Everybody should try it five times. Although, oh, this is roll call, though.
Correct. Mrs. Partizani?
Aye.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Mrs. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Forehand?
Aye.
Mr. Bragman?
Aye.
The motion carries 5-0. Now, we're looking at the appointment of David Boyer to the Personnel Commission for the term of December 1st, 2025 through December 1st, 2028. Do I have a motion for approval? Oh, Dr. Wiestright, did you want?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. As we shared earlier, this is the board's opportunity to take action to appoint Mr. Boyer to the Personnel Commission for the next three years.
Thank you so much.
I so move.
Any discussion?
I would like to say that I had the honor of serving with Mr. Boyer when he was a school board trustee, and I think that his insight of how the board works and how the district works to be our liaison on the Personnel Commission is exceptionally valuable, and he is a huge cheerleader, so I really appreciate it.
I agree. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion carries 5-0. We are looking to, for an approval to elect members to serve on the Orange County Committee on School District Organization, and as I understand it, that's, would you like to explain what it does, that does actually?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So this is a countywide committee that is made up of different representatives. Each representative, they break up the, by the Orange County supervisor areas, and so in this case, there are three people, three different positions that are open, and they're running on a post. But this committee oversees when districts change their boundaries. If they go to trustee areas and they have to, you know, approve the boundary maps every 10 years through the Census Bureau, as you know, we have to take a look at and see if we need to readjust our trustee areas, et cetera. We would approve them locally here, and then they go up to the County District Reorganization Committee, who would make the final approval. So that's, this committee's job would be doing that. Or if there are any discrepancies between one district and another upon boundaries as well, we haven't seen that in a long time, but if there was, this committee would oversee that process as well.
So just curious, is the process, do we need to make a motion to vote for each one of them?
We can move to vote for all three, but so, but it's David Johnson, an incumbent, Paulette Shafie, an incumbent, and Sheila, Sheila, sorry, Sheila Benneke, an incumbent. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Did we move to approve them all in one?
Yes, my motion is to approve all three incumbents.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Now, we are doing approval of warrants. Those are the bills we get every month, which, Mrs. Schnur, you do a fabulous job of keeping in account. They're sometimes 40 to 60 pages long, and they can include everything from pencils to, you know, building to building, so it's pretty amazing. So do I have a motion for approval?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion carries 5-0. The best part, acceptance of donations. So these are donations from all over the community, and we are so deeply grateful for them. It can be PTA, it can be an organization, it can be a family, or fundraiser. So do I have a motion for approval?
I have approval.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, so $55,446.86 this year, I mean, this month, and $238,207.17 for the year, which is the school year, not January. So this is quite amazing. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion carries 5-0. Now, Dr. Wiestright, we're going to decide about classified personnel reports, certificated and administrative personnel reports.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we're bringing forward the three personnel reports that reflect changes since our last meeting, and we recommend approval as submitted.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No, just make sure that we're approving all three, H, I, and J.
Correct.
No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries 3-0, or 5-0, sorry.
3-0?
That's because I only have half a brain left. Okay, so that brings our meeting to a close. We have, we are not going into closed session, so we are adjourning at?
7:28.
Wow, 7:28. Nice work. Have a great evening.
Yay.